Good morning, it's nine o'clock. We'll start today's Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll ask for everybody to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
A pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's an open, there's a copy of Open Meetings Act here on the north copy, on the north wall of legislative chambers. There's an automatic defibrillator in the back in case of health purposes if anybody needs it, and also if you have any cell phones, we're asking to please turn them off or silence them or put them on mute. With that, we will go to the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting, roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. Item B, call for a meeting that's set Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, as a date for hearing on certified corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle. Second by Commissioner Borgeson. Please vote.
I believe Commissioner Boyle's vote will still not appear, but he did vote yes, as did the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes all.
Item C, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll go to resolutions. Item D, we can take items D, E, F, and G together. What's the will of the board? There's a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote. Dan, do you want to note your...
Yes, just on item F, Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership. Item G, excuse me, Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership has a vehicle on that list, which I'm a board member of.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Rogers, I still need your vote.
Yeah, I'm waiting on you to say your piece.
Motion passes. Commissioner Boyle abstains. All their commissioners voting yes.
Item, letter H is an appeal of 10% penalty imposed for personal property returned for figgy by faith. Deborah R. Gray. Mr. Goodwill.
Motion to support the county assessment.
There's a most, there's a second by motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
If I could make a comment, this is another one of those cases where we don't have the authority to waive it, so I don't see what we're talking about here. So that's why, let's just cut to the chase on this one. That's what I think.
Yes, that's including German.
I'm sorry.
That includes German.
Yes, it does.
Please vote.
Is this person here?
No, she's a grant writer.
Is there someone here to speak on that?
No, that's the grant writer just walked in. Okay.
Commissioner Rogers, would you mind repeating who made the motion, the second?
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda.
Thank you.
We'll now call...
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Jim, I need your vote. Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
We'll now call the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting, order roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. Item B is the approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018.
No move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Item two is the consent agenda. There are eight items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duda. Mr. Boyle.
When I was overlooking this over, there was something that Ms. Glassnap had, I believe it's item F, and it was, but I don't see the total, yeah, here it is, number two. I'm a little concerned, I know that it's something we've been doing in the past, but we have some kind of a relationship with Purdue University, Catholic University. I'm always concerned about these organizations that are for-profit schools. I just want to be sure we don't get, I'm sorry, I should have called you, apologize for that. And I'm sure this is a worthy, worthy thing and something we need too, but why are we doing this with, how'd this come about? I know it's a transition, I think they're taking over from somebody else, right?
That is correct. Good morning, Sherri Glassnap, Director of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. This is an ongoing relationship we have, where we have nursing students come to our facility so they can gain experience working in behavioral health, and hopefully in the long, in the long run, desire to have a career in behavioral health as a nurse.
Okay, I just, you know, some of these organizations, and I'm not talking about these that are named here, but some have had some difficulty in some of the representations they make to their students about the future and where they can go to work and how much they're going to make, and it doesn't quite pan out. So I, and then they have the tuition to pay, so I get a little worried that, you know, I'd rather, well, anyway, I'm just concerned about it. I hope it doesn't go belly up or something crazy, and I don't want these students to get hurt, but I think I'll probably go ahead and vote for it anyway, just based on what, based on your reputation.
Yikes. No.
Yikes. Thanks, Sherri.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please vote.
I vote yes.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Item three, recognition and proclamations. There are three items to recognize employees that are retiring, two from the Douglas County Health Center and one from Douglas County Public Properties. Ms. Barbara Williams, after 27 years at the Douglas County Health Center, and Ms. Lori David, David, after 22 years at the Douglas County Health Center. Also, Richard Losi Jr. from the Douglas County Department of Public Properties, after 25 years. Is there a motion to approve A, B, and C? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Need employee being here, want to thank them for their service and wish them well in their retirement.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
We'll now move on to item four, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on items not listed on the Board of Commissioners agenda, the Board of Commissioners related.
Good morning, Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. This morning, I'd like to talk a little bit about transparency. We have some issues going on in Omaha right now that are probably going to be bigger issues. The topics might be, or probably will be, OTAC and the Omaha Land Bank. I was here a few weeks ago when there was a large presentation in favor of recognizing everything OTAC does, and I'm not against OTAC in general, but in relation to the K apartments. I think maybe they had a little too much influence on the committees in the city council. It's been on the radio, it's not just me, it's probably going to be on the radio again today. And the other topic that comes up is Omaha Land Bank. We do have a member, I think, on our council here that's on the board for Omaha Land Bank. That's probably going to come up on the radio in relation to this also, because the public is perceiving this as possibly a land grab. So I'm asking you and the city council also today to be a little more transparent on the whole operation of the moving the refugees with city buses through the public schools out of the area so inspections could be helped. But we feel that there's a lot of constitutional issues here, as well as tax dollar issues. So let's please have full, open discussions on the whole matter as to, well, I don't think the World Herald is here, but I had a journalism class way back in about 1960, 61, maybe 59, and the questions that a good journalist asks is to get answers and facts, or who, what, when, where, why, how, possibly how much, and how often, and how much longer. So please think those questions over when you start talking about these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. I had a handout for you guys, but can I just get something for Mr. Kraft at least?
Give it to the clerk, please.
Yeah. Let us get some rules or something. Oh, I'm just there. Sorry, Louis, I don't look up at all the rules. They're numbered.
What do you got, Louis?
Luis Jimenez, 2118 North 40th Street. Good morning. I'd like to say, Commissioner Kraft, we spoke briefly last week about the juvenile justice plan, and you insisted that an alternative has been looked at and considered. I'm in, I'm not in the belief that it is truly the case in the standpoint of deliberating. Let's look at the timeline on the issue. On August 10th, August 2017, Omaha World Herald published a piece with another judge on the way Douglas County considered, considers new home, a new home for juvenile justice by Chris Burbach. With an additional judge coming to help deal with a high volume of delinquency and family cases, Douglas County leaders are pondering a new home for the county's juvenile court, it says. The Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission is preparing to hire architects to study space needs for the county juvenile justice system. The commission was expected to choose a firm Thursday, but it has delayed a decision until at least September. Some potential locations have been identified. Officials declined to comment on the possible locations, but they are leaning toward downtown near the courthouse, he says for some reason. On August 25th, Mr. Burbach reports, the Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission took a step Thursday toward a new juvenile justice center, possibly on the site of the Metropolitan Utilities District Headquarters in downtown Omaha. The commission hired the Omaha-based architect firm DLR Group to study Douglas County's juvenile justice space needs, develop one or two options for how to meet them and estimated costs. That was on August 25th, 2018. A final report would come out on January 2018. In the meantime, on November 21st, 2017, articles of incorporation were filed with the Nebraska Secretary of State for the Douglas County Unified Justice Center Development Corporation. The following is that document. So if you look at their articles of incorporation, Article 2, public benefit corporation, this corporation is a public benefit corporation. Article 5, organization and purposes, down below it says, "The specific, specific purpose of the corporation are to function as an entity which shall partner with the Omaha Douglas County Building Commission in Douglas County, Nebraska." And for what? For assumed justice reasoning, according to the title. Article 6, members, this corporation shall have no members, so not even experts of the field can pay dues to join the corporation. Article 8, powers relative to corporative ventures by public hospitals, it says. Article 9, operating requirements, no substantial part of the activities of the corporation shall be the carrying on of propaganda or otherwise attempting to influence legislation and so on. Article 10, no capital stock. Any net earnings of this corporation beyond those necessary for retirement of any indebtedness or to carry out any low-rent housing project may not inure to the benefit of any person other than the Nebraska City Housing Authority. And then Article 13, neither these articles of corporation nor the bylaws of this corporation shall be deemed effective unless and until the same are approved by the Board of Commissioners of the Nebraska City Housing Authority. And then at Article 15, signed by George B. Achola, 1004 Farnum Street, suit 400, that's the Burlington building, I believe. The next page, page seven, from the final report, you see some schematics on the courtrooms, and I don't understand why a juvenile courtroom would need a gallery. That's something that might not be appropriate for the juvenile court system. There's, on the number eight, page eight, there's more schematics. Commissioner Claire Duda said of the need for additional space, "We are out of room, and so we have no choice but to address this, and we have to address this now." Out of room for who? For the judges. And then on the final report, on the page 10, you have the open large-site exploration, and you have the restricted small-site exploration. The open large-site exploration is the campus style, the cons, only three cons, potential proximity to residential area, which that's point, you know, that's already happening at the current location. Potential rezoning, you guys have the power to rezone or not, or the city council does, so you can talk to them, so that's not a problem.
Louise.
And potential lack of business services. Well, I want to get to the alternative plan, if you don't mind.
Do you want to, if you want to wrap it up?
The final...
Louise.
And then on the...
Louise, Louise.
Can I speak about the alternative plan?
I'm asking you to wrap it up.
So I can't speak on the alternative plan?
I'm asking you to wrap it up real quick.
I understand.
Thanks.
Anyway, it goes on to demonstrate the timeline to do with the corporation that is...
I'm going to give you 20 seconds.
...industriality. Okay, so it goes, this timeline goes on to show what, that the corporation that is now responsible to managing, it was set up solely for the downtown idea. It wasn't to explore alternatives. And the timeline will demonstrate, and also the documents, that they filed to restate the articles of incorporation and some corrections to conformity with what's going on.
Okay, thanks. Seeing that, we'll go on to, we'll go on to item seven is committee, and committee discussion and action letter. A is finance report. Number one is budget report, Commissioners Boyle and Morgan.
As presented, unless you have something, Mike?
No, I don't.
Thank you. We'll go on to item E, which is criminal justice committee. Letter one is resolution hiring Mike Myers as Director of Douglas County Department of Corrections. Commissioner Boyle, do you want to add anything?
I just want to make a couple of comments. I want to thank the individuals who served on the committee. It was really a good group, and I want to particularly point out the leadership of Patrick As Chair of the committee, I was supposed to be leading it, and he did such a great job. I just said, okay, continue. And he did a really fine job. The questions, I thought, were very well crafted, and it was just really a great example of how things ought to be done. I also appreciate the participation of all the members of the committee, it was very worthwhile. And we heard some really terrific people, and I think what was, what I enjoyed so much was the indication from the people who came and applied for the job that work for us now. We had some, some people who really know the operation really well, and it makes me feel very good about what they had to say, because I'm comfortable with having a group of people who could step in. I mean, and with the whole operation, Ms. Redman took a, was a terrific interim, a wonderful interim director and did a fine job. She was in contact with many of us when things developed. And so anyway, I just really, it was a very good experience. And we're very fortunate, I think, to have Mike Myers, he is, was, is still traveling. He's going to be in, I think, later today, which is why he's not here. But wealth of experience, and I think we're going to be continuing, this is one of the most important things, I think, all of us feel, is that we need to continue what's happening over there. We've been through some difficult times, and right now, it's really a pleasure to see the kind of people that are running the operation and their compassion for the people who are incarcerated. So I want to thank everyone for their participation and make a motion to hire Mr. Myers as Director of the Douglas County Department of Corrections.
It's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Duda, I mean, yes, Commissioner Duda.
I would also like to commend the process. I hate to give you credit for anything, Commissioner Boyle, but somebody ought to get credit for this process going well, and you were the chair. But, but what I really appreciated on it was having both Mark Foxall and Bob Houston there to help us. I mean, the board certainly participated actively, but I just have more confidence when, as one of the applicants put it, the two professors that were sitting at the table, it was so nice to have their assistance. There were many good people to pick from, but I think the group was quite comfortable with what we ended up with. So thank you for leading a good process.
Thanks, and the credit does go to Mr. Bloomingdale. I killed you to tell me, but, thanks.
Mr. Morgan.
I just want to add also that Amber's done a great job stepping into that she didn't not apply, and also to thank Dave Aldridge for sitting through those too. I think it's good to have us all together and participate in that discussion, and you were right, Commissioner Boyle, we did have some excellent candidates for that position, and that's good to know. And we have great backup of that leadership with a great team behind him at the correction facility.
Come on.
Patrick?
As long as credit is being given, I'm going to deflect that credit to Karen Colen in her office. She did all the legwork behind it to make sure it happened smoothly and went well, so I'm just the person up front to look good, but she did all, most of the work, so.
She sent me a note and told me that, that she was the one who did all the work. I didn't want to say it, but, no.
No, I said it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote.
I vote yes.
Just to note, I've been told viewers at home can't see anybody's vote, so, but all commissioners did vote yes. Motion passes.
Item G is human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service, and that is as submitted. With that, we do have a need for executive session for litigation and labor negotiation. Is there a motion to go into executive session? It's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Could I have a personal privilege?
Go ahead.
After we vote?
Before we vote, go ahead.
Before we vote, I just want to compliment Jean Hartnett and all her staff for the tour that we had last week. Commissioner Duda, your leadership, participation there, and that was really very special, the couple hours we spent out at the health center, and what they're providing. I think that's just something that all of us can be very proud of, and, you know, this, many of those citizens that are there being served would not have any option. So I think it is something to be very proud of.
Corrections, too, is a good tool.
Yep. So that was good with the state senators, and I think we should send out a letter to those state senators, maybe just thanking them for their participation to spend that several hours there and ask questions.
Marcos is behind his head, yes.
Yep, good idea.
So that would be great.
They were good tours, thank you. With that, please vote.
Commissioner Kraft.
Mark.
Mike, you voted yes. Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. All their commissioners voting yes.
And no, we're going to executive session for litigation and labor negotiation.
Oh, actually, here.
Motion to adjourn, but it hasn't been made.
It has.
No.
You vote yes? All right. You vote yes as well?
I do too.
You do too? Okay. Motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes.[1742.12]